All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier on Zoom, Commissioner Carolyn McMahia on Zoom, Commissioner Jerry Edwards, Emily Claus in the Boardroom, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder here in the Boardroom. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube Channel. We have three hours if required to go through five items on this morning's agenda. First up is to review the draft agenda for this afternoon's business meeting, May 21st. So if we can pull that forward, we will start with the calling the meeting to order at 2 p.m. The pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards, approval of the agenda, and then we'll have a presentation, proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day. Amy, you want to speak today?
Yes, we have representatives from the Sheriff's Office attending to accept that proclamation today.
Okay. Any questions from the Board on this side? Then, uh, okay, let's see. Opportunity for the public to, the reason I hesitate, so if you see Consent Item 3A, we also have a proclamation that's going to be done by consent for therapeutic court. I have a short statement to read, and I'm trying to think of where I'll do that, but it might be right after the peace officers. I'll think about that.
Okay.
And we do intend to have, I think prosecutor himself or one of his representatives might be giving public comment.
I believe so.
As we had suggested that he do, to speak to this resume. Okay. So then we'll have opportunity for the public to address the board and county managers' update. Any items there?
I'll be mentioning that the County Road Administration Board Certificate of Good Practice was issued to our Public Works Department. And then also that our Fleet Services Division won the National Association of Fleet Administration, one of the best public fleets.
Awesome. And there's Public Works Week, right?
It is Public Works Week, so I appreciate everyone wearing shades of orange and also it's Public Officers Memorial Week, so also shades of orange.
All right, so we got a couple of things going on. Assistant County Manager Rob Campbell, wearing her orange.
There you go, representing.
Right on cue. Okay, then we have a number of consent items. 3A, as I mentioned, is a proclamation for therapeutic court awareness month. Assume so folks have looked at that. No questions there, I assume. Let's go to 3B. Sheriff's Office Item Black Lake Regatta Application. We heard from Brady last week. Lieutenant Brady, anything new on this one, Lieutenant Brady?
I don't have anything additional to add.
Any questions or concerns in the Board on Black Lake? Okay, good to go. Thank you. Item 3C, Human Resources Resolution to Reclassify Positions. I think we went through this in some detail last week. Who's?
Okay, HR's here.
HR's here. They provided some information. No more additional questions. We'll be talking for future items to give that background upfront, so it's not just a list of numbers, but the team will be working on that in the next week or so for future items.
How about start off with reminding that the public that might be hearing this for the first time what these positions are, or at least what departments they, thank you.
Good morning, Maria Fonte, HR Director. What is going for you today is our six requests to reclassify positions. One is from the Auditor's Office, one is from the IT Department, one is from Public Health and Social Services, two from Public Works, and one from Superior Court. Last week, we talked about what the current classification is and what the requested classification is, and I described the HR process for analyzing, reviewing, and seeing if there's justification for the request. Tara has been working on a way to format this so that you see this information before you in one document. We do have a copy of it. We weren't able to upload it, but if you would like, we could pass that out.
That'd be good, yeah. And I think if I remember correctly from last week, this is the next to last batch of clearing the backlog from last fall. Three classes that we held up during the budget process to address in a more orderly fashion this year.
Correct.
Okay. And maybe one more. I think there's, there's four left in the back.
Four of that, and then there's new ones slowly trickling in.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. Okay, questions for Maria or? Take a look at this. Thank you for this.
And we can continue to modify this so that it eventually contains all of the information you find useful in making your final decisions.
Thank you, Maria.
No, no question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is 3D, Appointment to the Civil Service Commission. We have a number of appointments coming up here, so I don't know if we need to go through them one by one unless the Board has any concerns. We have a Civil Service Commission, a Fair Board, a Historic Commission, one, two, three, four, five Veterans Advisory Board, six, seven, actually seven Veterans Advisory Board appointments, because they just expanded their numbers. Any questions, concerns on those items? Okay, let's move on. Two voucher lists to close out the consent agenda. 3N is the week of May 6th. 3O is the week of May 13th. Any questions? All right. That's the consent agenda. Let's go to Department Item 4A, Central Services, Purchase of New Dishwasher for Thurston County Corrections Center.
Yeah, Jason's here. We discussed, this is not the type of dishwasher you want installed in your house last meeting. Jason, anything more?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just that this, we, this was vetted through the state contract. We received prices from both vendors on the state contract with Don Edward being the lowest. And I'm here if you have any further questions.
Anything on the dishwasher? No. Okay. On we go. Four, or sorry, five, A, Bond Resolution for Acquisition and Remodeling of Various County Facilities. Treasurer Gavin, Jeff Gavin here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair, if I could ask a question, just since Jeff's, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Can you give me an overview of the process? Because I know there's a group that meets on this, and being the new county manager, I'd love to hear the work that it's been entailed to get to this point.
Yeah, so thank you for that, and I look forward to entertaining you at our Finance Committee meetings, because it's an important committee. So the Finance Committee by statute is treasurer as chair, auditor as vice chair, and then the chair of the legislative authority. And the biggest duties that we have is monitoring the investment pool, setting the investment policy, and that sort of thing. We also set the county debt policy, and that is what drives how the bonds are issued, what kinds of bonds can be issued, and that sort of thing. Within the debt policy, there is a point of review for the Finance Committee, and what we're looking at is, does the bond resolution comply with the county's debt policy? And does it remain under the county's debt ceiling? Which, the county debt ceiling is somewhere around $900 million, and I think this is going to put us, what, about 1.1, yeah, yeah, yeah. So prior to the Finance Committee getting it, the Bond Council, Bond Advisors, and Robin's Office have put together what the resolution is going to look at. Finance Committee looks at it and again checks for compliance with debt policy. So what I'm here to say is that the Finance Committee has found that this particular bond issue does comply with the county debt policy, and our recommendation is for it to move forward.
And then Assistant County Manager Campbell, the projects that have been identified, are those projects consistent with, I'm going to get the terminology here wrong, we should call it capital improvement project list, but it's called capital facilities?
Capital Improvement Plan.
Capital Improvement Plan. Are those projects consistent with what has been identified by the Board in previous conversations?
Yes, they are. The Ballot Processing Center is part of the Mottman remodel, which is specifically called out in our CIP for 2024. And then the building for the sheriff is under the land acquisition umbrella that enables us to take advantage of opportunities that come our way. And the FJC project, should we include it, is also specifically called out in the CIP.
And any of these projects, after this action, and this is again, I appreciate you giving time for the new guy, but these projects would individually, if they're going to move forward, have to be brought back for individual board approval and conversation? Is that correct? For proving the ability to get?
The project itself?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes. The approval for the projects are on a very different track. This is just to approve the issue of bonds. And really, we're doing this now so that at the time the bonds are issued, that we can act very quickly to close the bond with the most advantageous bid that the county receives. And even with this resolution in place, I would not actually authorize our Bond Advisors to issue the bonds without, again, coming back to the Board with specifics.
It'll be a second touch point, where then we can look at each specific issuance in detail.
We intend to do only one issuance. We save a lot of money in the bundle, but I would not take that action without a final approval of the Board.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the time to ask this question.
Let me share with you.
I guess my concern is nothing to do with what Jeff has been talking about here today. My concern is we just got an official finding from the state auditor yesterday. And I want to spend some time, I've heard that, well, it's just a technical thing, but I've also got some major concerns about expenditures and how we have been spending money once we get it. And that's why I don't think it has anything to do with Jeff, but I think we have some issues to straighten out. I think that timing is part of this. So tell me what happens if we wait a month, or if we wait a week, or what takes place that this is now kind of, I know we did this sometime back to start the process, but we didn't have a finding there. And what was going on when I originally was involved in this? We extended the audit finding report, I think, six different times, maybe five or six different times it was delayed coming back out. That, to me, was very unusual. So that's my concern. I'd like to know what happens when we delay this for a little bit to discuss how we have been doing business, how we are going to rectify that. I think the gifting of public funds, this whole tenant improvement issue, on what is, what isn't, how do we cover that, how do we recover any misspent funds? So I want some more answers before I'm ready to move ahead. So that's kind of where I'm at on this.
So the effect of the delay is we have worked with Bond Council and Bond Advisors to lay out a schedule. We can certainly delay the schedule. It will, part of the consideration given to the schedule is when we think we're going to need the money to pay for the tenant improvements. So not having it and the proceeds will, the only factor there is that the Board of County Commissioners will probably be asked to do an interfund loan until the bonds are issued, or we would delay the projects, which is completely up to the Board on when we move forward with those. The other impact of delay is what we saw with the, the delay that we had in issuing the bonds that are being used to improve the courthouse. And that is in a time when interest rates are volatile, or volatile. It could cost the county hundreds of thousands of dollars to delay, which is what happened last time.
Commissioner Mahia?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, I guess just going back to Commissioner Edwards' questions, I'm wondering about those pending projects that we have, right? One of them is the sheriffs, and the other one is the auditor. And I know with the auditor's Ballot Processing Center, I thought in that one, it's an ongoing one. So that's kind of one of the most pressing ones that I'm seeing. So if we were to delay this, how would it impact that project?
I don't think that we would have to impact the project. We would instead come to the Board and ask for an interfund loan, because we would be waiting on the proceeds from the bond issue to be able to pay for the tenant improvement costs.
I have a question too.
Commissioner Fornier first, and I'll grab Commissioner Claus.
I just want to say, we have a lot of capital facilities needs, and these ones in particular, I am very comfortable with. I think that we've got good deals, we've got a good direction. I am much, much more comfortable with these than I am with the conversations we have with the courthouse remodel project.
Commissioner Claus?
So my question was, how much do we save with bundling the three projects into one?
Oh, the costs that we savor the issuance costs. So the payments to the Bond Council, the Bond Advisor, the issuer, the closing costs, the, I mean, there are a multitude of costs related to issuing bonds, so it's a substantial amount of money. I can find our last bond issue to get you an estimate of how much those are.
Okay. Well, that kind of answers one question I had was, I agree with Commissioner Mahia that the Mottman complex is the most time sensitive, in my opinion. And I was, I remember going back to when we first talked about this. One of the questions I had was whether we could split them up, but that kind of answers that question. And it sounds like the interfund loan for the Mottman complex might make more sense. But I'm with Commissioner Edwards on needing a little bit more time, at least a week, to kind of let the dust settle on the audit finding that we just had for the atrium. So I'm with Commissioner Edwards on needing a little bit more time for this item.
So if we did an interfund loan, that loan has to be paid back.
It does.
So there's not, I mean, there's like, you'd have to issue the bonds to pay back the loan that you did.
We would assume that you're going to issue the bonds.
Sorry.
Not only that, you also have to pay a lot of interest on your own interfund loan.
Yes, indeed.
I'm completely opposed to that approach, but Commissioner Claus, you had something?
I think that the difference is if we were to find that there were any issues with, like, let's say, I mean, two of these are CIP items, and then one is a land acquisition item. Commissioner Edwards, do you have concerns with all three, or is there, is it the land acquisition specifically?
Well, it's the way we've been doing business, once we get the money. That's what my concerns are, how we're going to spend that money.
So with all three items, all three projects?
Well, it isn't that I've got particular problems with the items, it's how, how we do business. I think that's a question.
So we shouldn't be spending money on the sheriff's building either, right? Right, Commissioner?
Well, we can just wait. We can wait until we take a look and see if we need to adjust how we're doing policies. We're talking about now doing more tenant improvements. If we get the sheriff's building, well, how do we, do we bid that, or don't we bid that?
You bid it because you own it.
Well, it's
Pretty simple.
It's the way it's been, we did $5 million of, why was it a tenant improvement to put an HVAC system in this building? I'll never get that. The fire suppression system, a tenant improvement. We can't take any of that with us. This is the leased building. Now, I know there's a difference between whether we own it or whether we lease it. The rules change. But that doesn't negate the problem that I see on how we've been doing business. And that's my concern, that we get this ironed out before we move forward on new stuff. It's just like the whole business about the $50 million bond that we're doing to remodel. I was opposed to that because only the unincorporated citizens are paying the bill. Yet, the municipal folks are utilizing it just as much as the unincorporated folks. It's a fairness issue. So we've got things to iron out in a lot of different areas. That, that's my concern.
Just to add, I mean, oh, I think, I don't know.
Go ahead, Commissioner Claus.
So for me personally, like I said, I need a little bit more time. Even if we could delay it like a week for a decision, I have a meeting with a budget staff on Friday to kind of further understand what's going on with the budget component of this. So I would feel more comfortable if I had that, like, those pieces of information that I'll gather this Friday.
On Thursday, I have a meeting with the county auditor as well to discuss a lot of my concerns.
Okay, Commissioner Fornier?
I'm just, there's a lot of different things to kind of collect my thoughts on. But, you know, us moving forward with this at the meeting doesn't stop anyone from continuing to gather information. So, you know, like, we can do multiple things at the same time. We don't, you know, it's not a single lane here with us to be able to, you know, operate. And then I just, the entire, I would love to, like, set aside three hours to argue out that REIT argument that Commissioner Edwards makes regarding the rural community versus the urban community. Because everybody that drives to the courthouse also drives on roads that are funded by Olympia, not the county. So like, there is, there's a tremendous amount of, like, reciprocity that we have to accept is part of the system. You know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. I agree with you 100%. So it sounds like there's at least a couple of Commissioners that would like to delay this item from today's agenda. Is there a third Commissioner that would like to delay this item from today's agenda? Commissioner Mahia?
No, I was going to say the opposite. I'm ready to move forward on this item. I agree with Commissioner Fornier for those Commissioners who need more time to talk with the auditor or the budget team, right? You can, you can still do that. But our next meeting won't be until June 4th, so it's not just delaying it a week. It'll be delaying it a couple of weeks.
Okay, so I'm hearing just, I'm hearing a majority that would like to keep the item on today's agenda. So it will stay on today's agenda. Okay?
So, just to clarify, thank you for your time this morning. So I've spoken from the standpoint of the Finance Committee last week and this week. Do you all need me to be in this afternoon's meeting? No. All right.
I would actually, uh,
Go ahead, Commissioner Mahia.
Jeff? I would actually appreciate if Jeff came in and provided that perspective this afternoon as well, because I think it's important.
Okay. All right.
If that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is 5B, Council on Racial Equity and Inclusion Proposed Bylaws. You got them?
Hello. Good morning. Um, all right, so I am here to just give high level overview. I'm assuming you've had a chance to look at the bylaws. Um, so this is the first draft of the bylaws since the council had been established, uh, I think in twenty twenty-one, so.
Just introduce yourself.
Yes, my name's, thank you, my name's D.V. Ogden, the County Racial Equity Program Manager. Um, okay, so within the bylaws, um, what the council did was look at bylaws that exist already for our advisory boards and commissions, and then look at other bylaws in other jurisdictions, um, specifically on councils for racial equity. Um, and so just took kind of best practices and common, um, components to, to draft these bylaws. So within the bylaws, we have our purpose, authority definitions. Um, the responsibilities come from Resolution sixteen oh nine seven, which is the resolution that established the council in the first place. Um, within the bylaws, we have, uh, desired characteristics and professional expectations. I don't think that's something that you commonly see in bylaws, but we felt the need to incorporate what we're looking for. So as we go through recruitment processes, um, and publish these online, we can be very clear and transparent about, um, the, the type of experience and characters and qualities that we want a person to embody as they consider joining the council. Um, the bylaws also identify the membership, um, which comes from the resolution, um, the process to appoint members, and then the process to recommend, um, potential removal based on just attendance and, and other potential issues. Um, and then just goes through the various roles. So there's the executive leadership team, the chairs, the active members, my role. That basically covers everything. Any questions about what you see in the bylaws?
Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, I see the date that is, uh, for June eighteenth. Seems like, are we having some rate, some period in there that? I, I, I'm just trying to coincide that with who's all available. Are we all?
Our, our commissioner thing starts the twenty-fourth of June.
Okay, good, that's, thank you. That was my only question.
No, Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. I just was gonna say a great job to D.V. Um, you know, I know this, uh, bylaws took some time, and so I know there was a lot of coordination that went into it. And so, uh, just great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item five C, Set Public Hearing for Telecommunications Franchise Agreement with Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC, DBA Zipley Fiber. Nicole Martinez. Commissioner Mejia, something further?
No, I just forgot to lower my hand.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager. So we're here today to, or I'm here today to set the public hearing for Zipley Fiber Pacific. They are seeking a non-exclusive franchise agreement to construct, operate, or maintain fiber optic telecommunications lines and system facilities within Thurston County's right of ways for the purpose of providing telecommunications services. So per RCW, a hearing, um, there must be a hearing on a franchise application as well as posting in the newspaper and locating the, um, public hearing notice three places within the county seat. So we're gonna do that June third and also, um, the tenth. So about the application, Zipley does not, um, currently have facilities in the county's right of ways. The company intends to build a network throughout the unincorporated parts of the county, beginning within the areas adjacent to Olympia, Lacy, and Tumwater. The proposed franchise is very similar to other telecommunications, um, franchises that the county has entered into. It is for a term of ten years, and it contains obligations regarding Zipley's construction, maintenance of its networks, protections against damage to the county, and third party. So I work with outside counsel, that's Ken, and also inside counsel, that's Julie, to draft the resolution and the agreement. Do you have any questions?
Hearing none. Good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Community Planning and Economic Development is up next. Six A, Interlocal Agreement Amendment for Voluntary Stewardship Program. Ashley Arai is here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ashley Arai, Community Planning Manager. Kevin cannot be here today, and I actually won't be here this afternoon to present this item. You'll see Andrew Defoas. Familiar face. But, uh, as was mentioned last week, this is an amendment to our existing voluntary stewardship program in our local agreement with the Thurston Conservation District. It's essentially, um, expanding the amount of pass-through funding that the state conservation commission has granted us for caution projects for our farmers here in Thurston County. So this is just allowing us to, um, relay that funding onto the conservation district so they can provide the technical assistance on the project. Happy to answer any questions?
I don't think so. Good to go.
You'll see Andrew, Andrew this afternoon.
Are you here for six B?
Yes, here with.
We have Dana as well.
Here with Dana.
Ordinance, uh, for A twenty-five forest lands conversion code update and Dana Bowers.
Hi.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So I'm Dana Bowers. I'm an associate planner at Community Planning Economic Development. And this morning, we're bringing you A twenty-five, the docketed item to amend forest land conversions and, um, review the tree protection standards, and it's for your consideration to adopt. The changes align with current county policies, or will align the code with current county policies. They'll protect landmark and heritage trees. They'll maintain flexibility for development and add provisions for adaptive management. Planning Commission reviewed it with two meetings and a public hearing that was duly noticed. You've had five, uh, work sessions and a public hearing on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, and community engagement has been broad and ongoing, um, since twenty twenty-two when it was docketed. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Edwards.
And didn't you have quite a number of community groups that you coordinated this with?
I had thirty-nine groups.
Sounds like quite an undertaking. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the work. And, um, any questions, other questions for the board? No, we've, we've all had, in addition to the five work sessions, I think we've all had individual work sessions with staff to try to get our, our heads around, um, this pretty complex and somewhat innovative, um, policy that we're trying to propose. Saw a thumbs up from Commissioner Fornier. County manager.
I can just make a comment. I've been very impressed with, uh, your collaboration and hard work going back and forth and bringing everyone up to speed, so just wanted to say thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, this will move forward this afternoon. Thank you. All right, Emergency Services, seven A, Request for Proposals for Underwater Remotely Operated Vehicle. Is this a new item? I feel like I would have remembered this.
Yeah, this, Commissioners, this is a new item. Um, because of timing constraints, we needed to walk this up. But Ben is online.
All right, Ben, tell us about the underwater remotely operated vehicle.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, the Thurston County Dive Team was awarded Homeland Security Grant Funding to purchase an underwater remotely operated vehicle, or ROV. It's helpful in locating drowning victims and other potential items of evidence while maintaining safety for the dive team itself. Uh, the procurement process will be through an RFP, and we're seeking authorization to go through the procurement process, through that RFP process. Uh, like I said, the funding is through state, state Homeland Security Grant Funding that's already been appropriated, uh, in the current biennial budget. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right, I got questions. Sorry. So I, I can't really visualize this. I mean, is it, is it like have wheels and it rolls on the surf on the bottom of a lake or something? What are we talking about?
Uh, no, it would be more along the lines of being powered with a propeller. So it's all propeller-based. It would go into the water. It would have a camera attached, and they'd be able to power it, propeller, into high currents uh, and be able to search for drowning victims, search for evidence, search for other items, uh, where swift water would be very hazardous. Uh, and it helps to prevent a lot of those hazards, uh, because they wouldn't ultimately need to have the dive, dive team members in the water. They'd be able to use this ROV to help search and locate exactly where they need to go and specifically place their dive members, uh, in those locations.
Commissioner Fornier.
I, I think this is exciting, and, uh, I, I want, yeah, I like, I wanna learn more about specifics about what this thing is. But I, I love it, uh, just like when we were talking about the helicopter with the HECS system. Uh, search and rescue is labor-intensive. It's hard to conduct. We've got a lot of areas where it's really hard to get people in, and it's hard to get people out. So I, any chance, anytime we get to get these, these new capabilities, I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you, Ben.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Commissioners, if it would be okay, given this is an, a request for proposal, and, um, Mr. Miller Tagg is, uh, out of the office, would it be possible or, uh, acceptable to move this to the consent agenda?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Yep, sounds good. See thumbs up there. Um, and you said this is where, the money is gonna come from a grant, but we, we have to go through this process.
This is the procurement. It's just going out for RFP. Um, so we have yet to identify, uh, responsive bidders and go through the rest of the contracting processes that will come back to the board.
And when, when we come back to the board with the contract, we'll make sure we absolutely bring the images along, uh, so you know exactly what we're talking about.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, Commissioner Fornier.
I, I just wanted to point out to the public and anybody else that doesn't know that, that the dive team, the Thurston County Dive Team, is a contingent of the Thurston County Sheriff's Office. So it's just one more specialty that the Sheriff's Office, uh, it's a service they deliver.
Yep, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further there, good to go, Ben.
Thank you very much.
This will be on the consent agenda, moves off of the, um, seven A and into the item three. Information Technologies up next. Replacement of Court Audiovisual Systems for District and Superior Courtyards.
Hello, good morning. Sherry Gilg, IT Director. Um, I am bringing, uh, forward a request to spend a million, a million dollars, one point four million dollars over the next five years to replace the, uh, equipment, the ju- just, or the audiovisual equipment in all of the courtyards.
We had some discussion last week, so I'll just remind, uh, everybody and, um, so if folks are curious about the details, might check the meeting from last Tuesday morning. But are there questions this morning for Sherry?
You guys were easy today. What else do I need?
Second review is usually a little easier, not always, but you. Okay, um, Public Health and Social Services, uh, is up next. And nine A is Michigan Public Health Institute Agreement. Gretchen Tolliver from Public Health Program Manager. Good morning.
Good morning. Gretchen Tolliver with Public Health, um, Division Director and Community Wellness. And this is, um, the contract that we, uh, talked about last week. It will allow us to expand our child fatality review work in Thurston County, um, and also allows for training and, um, safety supplies that we are distributing to community partners, such as first responders.
Anything to ask Gretchen about? Hearing none. Second, good Gretchen, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Nine B, Amendment to Homeless Services Contract with Washington State Department of Commerce. Tom Webster from Public Health and Social Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Webster, Office of Housing and Homeless Profession and Public Health and Social Services. So today, asking for your approval to sign a contract amendment with the Department of Commerce to add just over five point eight million dollars to our, our contract for homeless services. Um, so there's a variety of fund sources that Commerce provides us under one consolidated contract. And so this is additional funding for, for the next fiscal year. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone opposed to adding five point eight million dollars to our homeless services contract? Okay. Thank you, Tom. Standard process.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Nine C, uh, Setting a Public Hearing for Program Year Twenty Twenty Four HUD Annual Action Plan and Performance of the Washington Department of Commerce CDBG Coronavirus Funds. Is this you again, Tom?
This is me, and I'll be here this afternoon as well. Alex has had a meeting with HUD. So this is an annual requirement that we publish, uh, an annual action plan with our, the money we receive from the federal government under the Department of House and Urban Development. Um, so we have a thirty-day public comment period. Our draft annual action plan will be up on our website beginning tomorrow for public comments. Um, and so this is to, to set the public hearing for June eighteenth, which will be near the end of our public comment period. Um, we also need to have, take public comment on our, um, CDBG Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds that we received from the state. Um, so we have a one-page document that explains the beneficiaries and the use of those funds. That's a requirement of Department of Commerce who provided those funds. So we're doing kind of a joint public hearing to address both of those items. And this year, just for CDBG, uh, City of Tumwater made allocations for our CDBG funds this year. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tom on this one? Okay, on we go.
Thank you.
Public Works. Matt Hesman's here. Up, first up is ten A, Contract Award for Twenty Twenty Four Chip Seal Project.
Good morning. My name's Matt Hesman, uh, Thurston County Engineer. I'll be covering the four items for Public Works this morning. Um, Steve Bricker will be presenting this item, um, this afternoon. He's our construction manager. On April twenty-fifth, we received three bids, um, for the Twenty Twenty Four Chip Seal Project. Uh, Public Works has determined that Doolittle Construction is the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of four million, four hundred ninety-three thousand and three hundred eighty-two dollars. Um, the cost from this project will be paid for from the road fund. Um, this contract includes sixty-five miles of chip seal servicing in the southwest portion of the county. So I'm willing to answer any questions. Oh, I do want to follow up. I think I said typically we begin these, uh, chip seal projects after the Fourth of July, when the weather gets really good. Um, preliminary discussions with the contractor, they're hoping that we get some good weather. But if you drove in today, it doesn't look like we're gonna be chip sealing, chip sealing, uh, anytime soon. But if we get a good weather break, we're ha- we're hoping to go sooner.
Has Doolittle done chip sealing for us before?
They've, um, they've done a lot of chip seal for us in the past. We have a great relationship with Doolittle Construction.
Commissioner Mejia.
Thanks. Uh, Matt, what is, um, how many miles are we getting chip sealed? And is, does that compare to previous years?
Um, so we're doing sixty-five miles. I believe the last chip seal contract we did was, don't quote me, but upper forty somewhere. And just for the public's information, we try to, on chip seal operations, it involves moving a lot of equipment very fast. So we try to focus in on certain portions of the county. Um, so we're not driving from the southwest portion of the county all the way to the northeast, back to the southeast. So we, um, generally rotate by quadrant.
Maybe you say Steve's gonna give us breathing? Maybe he can just let us know how many miles?
Yeah, for sure.
It's time around. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, anything else? Thank you. Matt, are you up for the next one?
I'm, I'm up for it.
All right.
Gotta make sure I don't forget my, my update.
Exactly how that feels. Write it down.
I thought write it down, it's gone.
Exactly. All right, Public Works, ten B, Contract Award for Johnson Point Road and Hawks Prairie Road Intersection Improvements Project.
Okay, so I'll be presenting this one this afternoon, um, for Brian Meyer, who's our design manager. On March eighth, we received five bids, uh, to construct a roundabout at the intersection of Johnson Point and Hawks Prairie. The lowest responsive bidder was Midway Underground from Toledo, Washington, with a bid amount of two million, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Um, this project will be funded using a combination of federal grant funds as well as traffic impact fees. Um, we prioritize this project due to some traffic congestion we've experienced at this intersection, as well as some pretty significant collision patterns that occurred at this intersection. Um, so in conclusion, we're requesting the Board of County Commissioners to award the contract to Midway Underground for the amount of two million, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Since you brought up safety and the prioritization of projects, I have, I'm curious, because I, um, I know we have, we have roundabouts on a couple of points of the young highway as it, as it goes out. And I've heard from low residents that around that Spurgeon Creek area, that there's a lot of safety issues there. And I'm just wondering, is that, is that consistent with your data? And do we have, is that a, is that a candidate for a roundabout?
You just lobbed a softball at me. Thank you.
Oh, really?
Um, so, in our, uh, when we bring the tip forward this year,
Yeah.
we actually have a project, we actually have already collected a million dollars to construct a roundabout at that intersection. We've already. We've already.
Boom.
Thank you.
I was just hearing about this last night from people that were like, talking about how many accidents there have been and how difficult it is for pedestrians and like, it just seems like a, and I was like, well, we've got, you know, we'd certainly roundabout out Yelm Highway.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Because we just did one further east at Yelm Highway in Meridian. And so this one will work nicely with that one. We've had, the last collision we had at this was actually a pedestrian involved fatality. We actually have, we, intercity transit actually has bus stops on both sides of that, of Yelm Highway at that location. And you can imagine crossing that portion of Yelm Highway is not an easy thing to do with traffic. I believe the speed limit is 40 miles per hour through there, but I think we're all aware that most people don't drive 40 miles per hour through that section of Yelm Highway.
Cool. All right, thank you. Glad I asked. Commissioner Fornier.
Kind of off topic again, but from a safety standpoint. Down on Little Rock Road in those S-curves by the canoe, does that make sense to you? We get a lot of complaints there from those folks in that area about bad accidents. And it's not going to roundabout, obviously, there's no intersection there, but it's the curves that go through. So what drives the change that might come? I don't know what that might be, signage, maybe it's speed limit, I don't, I don't know exactly. But we've had some serious accidents right in there, and more recently, we've had quite a few.
Sure. So when, when we do the presentation for the tip, I'm, I'll discuss how we prioritize, how different programs prioritize projects. So we have a safety program, and our safety program is generally coming from our local road transportation safety plan. And that's looking at those corridors that have a high risk for runoff-the-road collisions as well as, not just the risk, but we'll also look back at the collision history as well. And then that'll prioritize projects moving forward.
Do citizen complaints help you make those decisions when we get asked about things? Should.
If we get citizen complaints.
Call you, or should we relay that?
Yeah, they should definitely call Public Works. And if there's a, if we reviewed a collision history and determined that something should be done.
What's a good phone number for those folks that want to call you?
867-2300, that's our front desk at Tilly. They'll eventually, for a question like that, they'll end up in our Traffic Engineering Operations Group. That's Becky Kong, and she does a wonderful job of following up with those requests.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions on that item, let's go to 10C. Set a public hearing to consider application of Pacific Harbors Council BSA for a non-exclusive franchise for a water distribution system and sanitary sewer system in Thurston County Rightaway.
All right, so Craig Sisson, who's on the screen behind me, will be presenting this item this week. So state law requires that a public hearing be held on franchise applications. Cooper's Point Water Company has applied for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a water distribution system within the Thurston County Rightaway known as Cooper Point Road. This is actually at the very end of Cooper Point Road. I'm missing something right now. You're okay.
Okay.
Nothing about you. I got recovered now.
You're doing great.
So this water company provides connections to 31 properties on Cooper Point Road. This, the water main that's actually going along Cooper Point Road now is actually galvanized pipe and is actually already leaking, so it needs to be replaced. The application includes replacing 1,100 feet of that four-and-a-half inch, or that two-and-a-half inch galvanized pipe with four-inch HDPE pipe. So in request, in conclusion, we're requesting the Board of County Commissioners to set a public hearing to consider the application of Cooper's Point Water Company.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
On, when you say replacing galvanized, so that must be old pipe that's in place, right?
1948, and it was pretty common back then to use galvanized pipe.
And when you replace that, are you able to follow that same pipe somehow where you don't have to dig up the road and things quite so much? Does that?
A lot of the time with HDPE pipe, contractors will try the directional drill. Basically, they dig a pit and then try to push the pipe underground without doing any trenching at all. Now, that's all subject to what the soil conditions are. If you're somewhere where, like South County, where there's a lot of glacial rock that's remaining, you can't do that. You have to open trench it. But if you're, it's somewhere where you have a sandy loam type of soil, then you can absolutely directional drill.
Thanks.
Can I piggyback on that question? So when the county is considering a franchise agreement, do you stipulate sort of the techniques that can be used in those specific locations?
We do, and we always, if there's going to be a road crossing, we always tell the contractor, whoever's doing the work, that they have to try to directional drill first. Because if we can avoid having to patch our roads, then we want to try to avoid that. Now, after, after three attempts, they still can't push across the road because of the soil conditions, then we have to allow them to open cut. And that's why our inspection team is critical because we've got to make sure that we get what we want put back.
Okay, I'm writing that down. I think you're right. Okay, any other questions? Next up is the last Public Works item, Setting a Public Hearing to Consider Application of Cooper's Point. That's correct, Cooper's Point.
This is Pacific Harbors. Oh, did you?
Did we switch items on each other?
We switched items on each other, I'm sorry.
Okay, so why don't we then talk about 10C? You were just talking about 10D.
I was just talking about 10D.
Right, let's go back to 10C.
So Pacific Harbors Council has, has applied for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a water distribution system and sanitary sewer system within the Thurston County Rightaway known as Summit Lake Road and Summit Lake Shore Road. Pacific Harbors Council provides the water and sewer connections to its facilities at Camp Thunderbird. That's the campground that the Boy Scouts of America use. The project will install two new crossings in the County Rightaway. One crossing at Summit Lake Road for both water and sewer and another on Summit Lake Shore Road for water only. This project will allow the camp to consolidate 11 separate drainfields into one, which is a good thing, and will also allow for future development of a new dining hall. So in conclusion, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners to set a public hearing to consider application of the Pacific Harbors Council.
Okay. When it says water distribution system, I understand consolidation of drainfields relating to sewer.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not sewer, but wastewater.
Sure.
But when it says water distribution system, how, what is that?
That's just a piping network to, it's just the underground pipes.
So we're still talking about wastewater?
No, so there's potable water and then there's, so that's just, that's all the water that's coming from your well to the facilities.
So they have a well?
Correct.
Very good well. That's, that taps groundwater and we just, I'm just trying to fit this in with yesterday's whole issue, which Matt, you may not know anything about, but we were considering a letter from Squaw's Island Tribe, and there was a whole packet of historical letters. And I know there was discussion in there about how you can't really drill a well in that Summit Lake area. There's not availability of groundwater, so, but apparently they have availability.
This isn't existing well.
Okay, so they've, they've got their source of water.
Correct.
And that's not an issue.
Mm-mm.
Okay. So this, when we were hearing about like 10 different applications for development, those were about water rights, so that would, this would be on, this would be above and beyond what the tribe was concerned about when they were worried about ecology about to approve 10 new developments.
Correct. This, this is specifically for the Pacific Harbors Council within their properties at the southwest part of the lake and being able to make connections that happen to intersect with County Rightaway. So that is a private system, basically, for their properties, as I understand it. And it's not, so when we talk about distribution, we're talking about distribution within their properties and not to other customers. It's not like a group A water system or something like that.
I know that they worked on this project for a really long time. And I almost want to say that, like, I know that at a certain point in order to get their project to move forward, they had different stakeholders, the county's been working with them. Have they had the tribe involved in what they're trying to do, the Boy, this is a Boy Scout city, right?
This is a Boy Scout city.
Yeah, and haven't they actually had those consultations with the tribe, do you know, Matt?
I don't know.
This has been going on since before I even got on the board, maybe Commissioner Edwards remembers better.
I do think, though, that it's a step in the right direction for what the tribe has concerned. And that would be a better drainfield system. Instead of these 11 separate systems that they've got now, they're going to kind of do state-of-the-art in one location, is my understanding.
Okay. All right, well, they're sort of connected, but not, not too connected. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the mix-up.
It's okay. All right, so back to County Manager item, and this is just the only item there is for us to do commissioner reports on work sessions. We've, you may notice, we've taken out the, going over the mutual schedule. It's kind of with two-week and three-week blocks, it doesn't seem to really serve much purpose, so. That was a proposal, and I give that the thumbs up.
Yeah, especially since a lot of your calendar information is all online, it's a bit redundant and I think sometimes confusing when we have, especially back-to-back meetings, we're going over weeks.
And it's always subject to change, so it's never really correct.
Yeah, the further you're going out, the more it's not going to be accurate, so it just seemed to be not. So you'll see that on the first future agendas for item, the County Manager section. And that covers our board's agenda. Will be a couple of changes there, Amy. Got all of those, a couple of staff member changes as well as the, taking out the emergency management piece and putting that under the consent. So that brings us to Proclamations and Awards.
Proclamations for Peace Officers Memorial Day and Therapeutic Court Awareness Month are included in your packets. Representatives from the Sheriff's Office will be in attendance to accept the Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation. And thank you, Thomasina, for sharing the confirmation that Prosecutor Attorney John Toonhye will be in attendance this afternoon. That is all I have for proclamations.
And just as a preview, next meeting will be Pride Month proclamation, and then that's it until after the commission, the board's break. Okay? And we've done that one in the next. Any questions on the proclamations? Okay, then let's go to Advisory Boards and Commissioners.
I have no updates today. Several appointees of their candidates have put it on your Newton's Agenda today.
Okay, and there's nobody from CPAD here. I would like to know, I might inquire, I guess, on my own, but I would like to know where we stand with the, there's a transition from SWAB to the RAB. And we were, you know, if there's a need, we were creating seats for that. And I can't remember if we finalized that, and if there's a need to start recruiting those new seats. I can, I can get to work on that if we're at that point, but I'm not sure if we're at that point.
We can go to, definitely get an update.
Maybe update next week, just so I know where we stand on that transition. Okay, so let's go to PIO check-ins.
Morning, Commissioners. Megan Porter, Communications Director. I have no specific updates this morning.
All right. Any questions for Megan?
I just want to give, I saw the Fleet Services video, and that one was very awesome. And then I, specifically, I watched towards the end, the logo, and then the little boat sailing in for Thurston County. And I, I rewatched it a couple of times because I was like, that is so awesome!
It's so cool. And we're getting the, the grazing video is just about finished, and it's, it's pretty cool, too. So you'll see that one soon as well.
Just great job. Those are, those are awesome.
I have to watch those. All right, any other things for Megan? All right, Wayne likes it, too. All right. Commissioner Items is next. I have one, Commissioner Klaus, I saw your eyebrows raised. You have one?
Oh, I just had something quick. I gave my updates yesterday, and I don't have any new ones, but I'll be giving those again at this afternoon's meeting for the public. I just wanted to say, I know they're not here anymore, but big shout-out to Public Works staff. When I started this job, I did not know that I was going to like Public Works as much as I do, but they always show up enthusiastic and prepared and really knowledgeable. So I'll probably give those comments tonight when they're back, but I just wanted to say that.
Yep, we're very proud of our colors.
I always say, if I were to log, if I had a, if I had a sheet, and maybe I should make one, of like, all the positive comments that I get about county, you know, it's, Public Works definitely wins that, you know, they get the most, you get the most reach out from the public to kind of compliment, which isn't, we don't always hear that, but we do get very frequently from about Public Works, so it's, it's really cool. Okay, well, I wanted to raise the issue of the Offutt Lake petition, sort of, not petition exactly, maybe. And just touch base with the commissioners on what, you know, is there a response that we can make to this? Is there something to be done? I'm going to look to Rob, because you've been kind of running point on the lake management. Commissioner Fornier, go ahead.
No, I was, I was waiting for an opportunity to make another comment on Commissioner's Items, but
Okay.
on this one, I'm still trying to gather information, and I too look to Rob for some guidance.
Okay, Commissioner McKee.
Can I make the, are you going to make the requests?
Sure. So I guess, Commissioner McKee and I were just kind of talking about this, and we were thinking that it might be good to have a briefing for the board because the two new commissioners weren't here when we did, when we went through the whole process of the vote and how that unfolded and how we, you know. And then I think all the commissioners probably want, need to know, like, we went through a process like this with Black Lake, where the, a citizen group petitioned to dissolve the special district, but that's a special district. And we weren't sure in our conversation, is it, is that, is that what this is? And the same thing applies to a lake management district? Or is there a different, like, if they did get enough people to sign off or whatever, like, what kind of process are we looking at for next steps? In the Black Lake situation, they had enough signatures, and I believe that forced us to have a public hearing and consider whether it was in the public interest to dissolve and make a finding on that, on that point, which we did. But we're not sure, you know, kind of what the process would look like. We've never had a lake management district petition raised up. So going through the history of what, where we've been, and then looking forward as to what, if this gathers steam, what it might look like for the board, we'd like, I think we'd like to see something prepared for the board to consider.
Yeah, Rob and I will be happy to do that, and taking into consideration your perspective about where does this letter and the signature put us, and we'll do the research to bring back the information on that.
Does that sound fair to Brett Bedspore? Okay.
And just as an FYI, the residents who are forming this petition said that they are still collecting signatures to try to meet that, meet that quota. And so we might get some amendments to those signatures. But we had a lot of conversations with Travis when we were going through this whole process of setting up the lake management district. And I just, it would be good for both Commissioner Fornier, since this is now in your district, and then also Commissioner Klaus, to be informed of this, of kind of the of kind of those previous conversations and kind of how we landed in this, at this point.
Commissioner Edwards, I saw your hand. Is that about this item, or you have your one item?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
It's about this item.
Go ahead.
On the action that we ended up taking on Black Lake, I think one of the issues was they had outstanding million-dollar bond or something like that, that the county may have had to incur if we had dismantled it, is that, isn't that right? I want the people at Offutt Lake to know
They had a bond, so we couldn't have, in that case, we couldn't have actually dissolved it. We could have suspended their operations, which made it even that much more.
The state law was kind of confusing on that, if I remember.
If I remember Elizabeth's advice about that is that we were not in a position, they had an outstanding bond, you're right, which means we couldn't have just dissolved them right there, because that bond had to be repaid. We could have suspended their operations and then keep, you know, having them pay, which would have just been sort of that much more problematic. The other piece of that, just since you brought it up, is just that, you know, what Black Lake was engaged in, they had hired the same contractor that was working with Long and Lawrence, and it seemed to have made a ruling that what they were doing was outside, was not in the public interest, when the county was working along the same lines with our own lake management districts, didn't seem to make any sense. So there were kind of multiple reasons why the board found it not to be in the public interest to dissolve or suspend operations of, yeah, you're, you're correct, I forgot about that. They had a bond, and that, that limited us to suspension, not dissolution.
In this case, I mean, I'm like everybody else, I don't know, it's too muddy, I can't tell you how it's gonna pan out if they get adequate signatures. There's a process, and let's, let's let those lake residents kind of figure it out, I guess, what they wanna do.
Okay.
Excuse me, yes, the process is laid out in RCW, so it is pretty much the same process for dissolution as it is creation, so, but we can
And I don't know how, how this has progressed, to what point some of the collection of they've got some kind of collection going on, so I don't know if that's gonna change the end process. That's kind of why I mentioned that, there could be a couple other wrinkles that haven't been considered yet, so if we're gonna get a briefing on it, we should have all those topics covered, I guess, so we can make a
Correct.
Proper decision.
We'll put that all together, Commissioner, sure.
Well, I don't think we're up to a decision quite yet. It would be more of an information.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, we're not ready for a decision at all. I'm just saying, as we head that direction, if we, we wanna make sure we have knowledge about every particular wrinkle before we end up in a, you know. I just kind of don't like briefings where we say, well, I don't know about that.
I agree, we'll definitely make sure that legal counsel has had an opportunity to review and/or is able to attend.
Absolutely, yeah.
We can go over with them ahead of time.
And it's a good general body of information, because it's the same for any LMD, right? So regardless of the current question we have for us.
Commissioner Fornier, you had an item.
Yeah, I wanted to give kudos to staff, in particular, Matt and Taylor. Our, I think, everybody's probably already seen it, but our art contest made the National Counties Newspaper, I believe it was, which is pretty cool. That's great PR for Thurston County, and it's pretty exciting, so good job, Matt, Taylor, and everybody else involved. I know the PIO team was involved as well, and that's, it's an awesome job. Thank you.
All right, cool. Anything else?
We can't wear sunglasses out here today, Commissioner Fornier.
He's also not wearing orange.
Yeah.
But he's got black.
I gotta turn up the background, hold on.
He's got his hearing protection on.
Oh, man.
Oh, wow.
Okay. I don't, I turned to the night.
I'll leave that up to you guys.
All right, is there anything else before we adjourn this one? You're nothing, we're adjourned.